Okay, we have some representatives from the police department.
All right.
Like...
I thought we took over.
Well, maybe I'm wrong in that, but I think that's...
If you were to... if you asked me, it's I call him.
Okay, can councilors please take their seats? We're gonna begin the proclamations. Okay, our first proclamation is being put forward by Councilor-at-Large Tom Ash. Councilor Ash, if you'd like to introduce the proclamation and our honorees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could Officer Flanagan, Tim, could you come on? Mr. President, just by way of background, over a year ago, one of the K-9 units... Canines, dog named Graham passed away. And I'll read the proclamation, it kind of explains the involvement of some members of the community that stepped up in a very big way for the Springfield Police Department. And then Officer Flanagan can kind of explain a little bit after I finish the proclamation, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, "Whereas the Springfield City Council is pleased to recognize Dan O'Brien and Brian Peron of Peron Automotive in Esau Meadow. And whereas Peron Automotive made a substantial donation to the Springfield Police Department K-9 unit. And whereas in 2014, the K-9 unit suffered the loss of one of its Canines, Canines named Graham. Within days, Dan and Brian expressed their interest in donating the purchase of a new K-9 for the department. And whereas with Dan and Brian's generosity, the K-9 unit was able to purchase their newest K-9 member, Agat. And whereas Agat has joined forces with his officer, Majak Jazinski, in providing for the safety of our officers and residents. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and commends Dan O'Brien and Brian Peron of Peron Automotive for their generous donation to Springfield Police K-9 unit. Proclamation sponsored on January 25th, 2016, in honor of Dan O'Brien and Brian Peron of Peron Automotive." Tim, if you could just kind of explain a little bit the background and as we recognize and thank Dan and Brian for their contribution.
Officer Jazinski's K-9 came under an untimely death. Really, really suffered greatly as a result of it. Within two days, three different individuals came forward immediately and said, "We want to get the Springfield Police K-9 unit another dog." In under 48 hours, these two individuals, check in hand, were at the station, saying, "Whatever the cost, here it is. Let's buy that officer another dog." Officer Jazinski, because of their generosity, now has K-9 Agat here, who's fully trained, been through the academy, and on the street now. We just wanted to formally recognize their extreme generosity to the city of Springfield. These two are the owners of the Peron Automotive in Esau Meadow, Massachusetts.
That's terrific. Turn it over to these guys. Just come forward.
Thank you. It just, you know, it's a, it was a very perfect thing to happen, and we just wanted to, you know, pretty much pay it forward. And it's, you know, it's karma. Karma's a big thing in life, and he's a, he's a great man, and, you know, it's, it was a very unfortunate thing to happen, and it was the least that, least that Dan and I could do.
I don't know, it's just, I had seen him work with Graham, and he was an excellent handler, he had connection with the dog, and now I see him with Agat. It was something that, it was, didn't even have to think or thought about it, just said... I called up Tommy Horn, he's my neighbor, I said, "What do I do?" He talked to Captain Claproot. He said, "It's gonna be this much." I said, "Come get a check." It's just, you can see the connection he has, he has with them, and he's already found two missing kids, not in, not in the city, but that itself is worth a million dollars.
Do you know this guy?
It's just, you know, I discussed it with my wife. She's like, "You don't have to talk to me about it, just do it." And here he is today, look at him, he's amazing, and then you have all the other Canines, and they're, they're all great.
Yes, he is next to the dog.
This is what you do.
Very greatly appreciated. Okay. Well, Councilor Ramos, I believe, we have proclamations.
No, this is just cottons card.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to ask Officer Nelson Milano and Juan Tavares to come to the microphone, please. Mr. President, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to acknowledge and recognize two Springfield fighters for their heroic efforts. On Monday, December 14th, these officers responded to a call, and the call had to do with a suicidal person. It was a man who was in his car with a gun and threatening to kill himself. And these officers went above and beyond their call of duty and were able to talk the gentleman into throwing the gun, tossing the gun out the window, saving his life and potentially saving other lives as well. So I'd like to rec, I'd like to read the proclamation into the record. "Whereas the Springfield City Council is always pleased to recognize an exemplary public servant on his many achievements. And whereas on Monday, December 14th, 2015, Officer Nelson Milano and Juan Tavares went above and beyond their call of duty when they persuaded a suicidal man to toss his weapon, saving his life and many others that day. Officer Milano grew up in Springfield and dedicated himself to public service since graduating from Fontana Vocational High School, class of 99, class of 2000. Whereas in 2004, he graduated from the Mass Sheriff's Intermountain Academy and would later be hired as a special police officer for the town of Ludlow. And whereas in 2010, Officer Milano enlisted in the United States Marine Corps and received service medals such as Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, and Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. And whereas in 2013, Officer Milano was promoted to corporal and currently serves as a non-commissioned officer in the Marine Corps' reserves. And whereas on May 4th, 2015, Officer Milano attended Springfield Police Academy and successfully competed, completed the training program in October, where he has since dedicated his career to being a patrol officer for the city of Springfield. Officer Juan Tavares graduated from the High School of Commerce in 2005 and proceeded to technical, Springfield Technical Community College to study criminal justice. And whereas in 2006, Officer Tavares was hired by the Springfield Police Department as a police detective and enlisted in the National Army National Guard as a military police officer. Whereas while in the Army National Guard, Officer Tavares was deployed to Iraq for Operation Iraqi Freedom from 2007 and 2008. And whereas under the Operation Iraqi Freedom, he received service accommodations, Army Commendation Medal, Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Iraq Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. And in 2009, Officer Tavares was accepted into the Springfield Police Academy and graduated in 2010. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and commends Officer Tavares and Milano for their act of heroism. Thank you for your service." Mr. President, these gentlemen, their actions are, on that day, was nothing short of heroic, and so I thought it was very important, and it is our duty, to recognize and acknowledge these gentlemen for their fine heroism. I'd like to give them an opportunity to address, the council, if you'd like to say anything.
Evening, officers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say it's an honor to be here, to be recognized. I'm just happy everybody got to leave home that night safely.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just like to say thank you for your service to our country, and thank you to our service to the city. Greatly appreciated the sacrifices, the debate, the training that you have that have made you such exemplary police officers in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your hard work, and congratulations. Thank you, Councilor Ramos, for bringing forward that very worthy proclamation.
Absolutely.
One more. Applause. Okay, any other proclamations this evening? I think we have one more. I'd like to get one last. I think it's a large, it's a large person. I don't know if it's bad. It's also a word, same. So, I don't know. So, this guy is all, he's alive around, with the city, city just approved it based on the fact that it was a firm ground, too. And so the city didn't cross-check to find out whether, whether there was a special condition. And talking to J.B., this gentleman proves it, special, proves a special point of the signs. He says it goes through so many of, time to conversation to cross-check to see if there's, just all of the conditions on the previous special one. So that city ran it, deserved, they went up the sign, the city association feels this overtake. Wonder just when the sign is there. So, will the court call you on this side? No. Oh, he hasn't. Okay, we're just gonna leave it, and you'll have to call the meeting at some point for it. We're not gonna take it up tonight. It's okay. You have to finish the hearing first before we send it to committee. You never finish the hearing. This is good that I didn't have, that you wanted to go. I'll ask him about that. I'll get an answer. Okay, I think we have one more proclamation this evening, is that correct? Councilor Ramos, do you have another proclamation? Councilor Walsh, do you have a proclamation?
Not tonight.
No other proclamations? Okay, so with that, councilors and our guests, please take your seats. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Justin Hurst.
Present.
President Kennedy Shay.
Present.
President Timothy Twigs.
Present.
President Timothy C. Allen.
Present.
President Timothy J. Book.
Present.
President Baudrillard Williams.
Present.
President Elena Rainey.
Present.
President Marcus J. Williams.
Present.
President Adam Gomez.
Present.
President Thomas M. Aschim, here.
President.
President Katie B. Walsh.
Present.
President Michael A. Fenton.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Tonight, we're gonna have this moment of silence in honor of two deaths in the city today, one of which was a relative to a state police officer. We were just informed by the SPD that was here earlier today for those proclamations that that took place in the city. So, offer the standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, housekeeping first. Counselors, there have been a few calls and correspondence asking that councilors make sure to turn on their microphones and attach the lapels to your tie or your jacket or your shirt when you're speaking, so the folks at home can hear you. Secondly, this is a hearings meeting of the Springfield City Council. Any and all petitions brought before us for special permit or zone change will, the applicants will be offered up to 20 minutes to present their case. You do not need to use all of those 20 minutes, but you are entitled to if you wish. Subsequent to that, there was an opportunity for rebuttals, that is also a 20-minute portion. After that, there is a 10-minute portion on each side for rebuttals for both the petitioners and opponents, if necessary. Could I impose on a member of the public to please open up that back door for purposes of this hearing to comply with open meeting law? Okay. And with that, Mr. Clerk, why don't we call the first... Oh, okay, let's not call the first item. Mr. Clerk, the first item was previously referred to the Special Permit Review Committee after the hearing was opened in this chamber. Can a, can a meeting be held by that committee on this subject? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Parties, let me see.
Yeah, Mossa.
Okay, so, so either way, item number one is not gonna be taken up tonight. The item was referred to the Special Permit Review Committee, which is now chaired by Councilor Shay. I will sync up with the clerk and come up with a strategy for how to move forward on that basis. We might need to delegate authority to the Special Permit Review Committee to hold the rest of the hearing, which we can do under 48. But I will sync up with the clerk, and we'll evaluate how to go forward on that basis. The petitioner and the other interested parties, including the neighborhood council, were informed in advance of tonight's meeting that no action would be taken. So, I guess for procedural purposes, we should have a motion to lay it on the table until we sort that out. Okay, moved by Councilor Shay, seconded by Councilor Edwards, to lay the matter on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Let's take up item number two, Mr. Clerk.
I have you zone change for 6 Liberty Street and 55 Emory Street, for the first time on January 11th, this April hearing.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward, state your name and residential address. We are joined by former Springfield City Councilor Tim Ryan. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Timothy Ryan, I reside at 72 Morningside Park here in the city of Springfield. I practice a lot Egan, Flanagan, Cohen, 67 Market Street, also in Springfield. I'm joined by Raj Gada, he's of Agawam, he's the principal of the owner, which is 6th Liberty Street LLC. The petition before you tonight is a rather simple one, and that is to change the zoning classification from Business B to Business C, simply because in Business B, there is a 60-foot height restriction. The height restriction in Business C is significantly different. Mr. Gada, as through 6th Liberty Street LLC, owns the property, he is in the process of exploring development of the property for residential and/or housing purposes. Those of you, well, you all know that this is the Kittredge, the former building occupied by Kittredge. It is two buildings, maybe three buildings. On Liberty Street, it's two or three stories, then it goes back to one story in the middle, and the northern end of the building is five or six stories in height, and that dates back to when? 1886. 1886. The building economically is obsolete. The building occupies probably 90, 95% of the, of the footprint, but in order to proceed forward with the planning for the development and the financing, one essential item is to remove the Business B classification. I'm happy to report that the planning department has reviewed and does approve the plan or the proposal, simply because if, when it goes forward, the city through the building department, through the planning department, Public Works, has numerous interactions with the project to regulate all of it. And so the approval by this committee does not, or by the council, does not forever cast the city asunder. The city would be an intricate partner in the development. With respect to the neighborhood, I did reach out to Councilor Gomez, I reached out to the New North Citizens Council and had a discussion with the New North Citizens Council. They informed me, and I believe, I hope it's true, that they have no problem with this going forward tonight, and they did ask that we go meet with them in February and March, when their schedule allows. Mr. Gada has agreed. So we would ask the council approve this minor change from Business B to Business C, so the project can go forward to the next steps. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilor Gomez.
I just want to reiterate that I have been in close contact with the neighborhood board and with Attorney Allen, and in the community, as thus far, we have no problems. I'm in total support of, of the Kittredge building. I think that, given the opportunity to, to people that are, that wanna build high-risers in our city and, and be able to, you know, bring a market rate housing down toward one is, is something that I'm ready to support, and hopefully the rest of the city council members see fit that we, we put this through.
Councilor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's encouraging to see that, you know, we, as much debate that we had about the MGM Motel Tower that we are here debating, and potentially gonna be approving a 15-story tower, is that correct, 15 stories?
Up to. I mean, it's still very much in the development plan, but the problem is, the, the cap on the existing floors kind of stymies the, the further development of the plan. It's one of these, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Right now, the restriction, the, the height restriction prohibits any further development of the plans because it's not marketable.
So, how high is the story gonna be?
15-story, yeah.
15 stories. So, how, how much, just a quick question, how, how much of the building will you be able to see above I-91? Do you know how tall, what the height is there?
Chirath Thacker, Russell and Dawson, Architecture and Engineering, East Rutherford, Connecticut. The total of 15-story-high building, it's about 200 feet high, and the first four-story will be the garage, and then anything after that, so another 11-story will be the residential, the hotel project. So, the project will be, all 11-story will be visible from the highway. So what we were trying to do is to try and to make a facility available which be higher than the highway, so it'll be less noisy and will be more accommodative to the residents of the proper project.
What is your timeline for the project?
Timeline is like 73, it'll be immediately start applying for knocking the buildings down.
Okay.
So I'll say three to four years.
I'm sorry?
Three to four years.
Three to four years?
Yeah.
I know there's been some talk in the past about potentially marketing that general area to a minor league baseball team. Did that ever, I mean, was that, was, was there any movement to that? Was there ever any truth to that on your part?
This site is substantially longer running north and south along the highway than it is wide. It's how, what's the width of it?
500 feet, 564.
No, 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 no.
Oh, the width? 100, 100 feet.
Yeah. So, nothing would happen here unless there was a significant development to the adjacent properties. It's just too small to, to site a baseball stadium monotone.
Mr. President, I just want to say that I welcome this, this sort of development into the city of Springfield, and I think that when we discussed the casino project, this is what we all envisioned, is that there will be a lot of spin-off development across the city, particularly in the downtown area, and, and I welcome this project, I think it's gonna be great for the city of Springfield.
Thank you. Councilor Twigs.
Mr. President, thank you, I rise to also speak in favor of this, but I think I need some clarification. My understanding is that this is a hotel, not residential housing.
We've got two projects on the same property, hotel and apartments.
Sir, if you could come forward.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah. No, we have a two towers we are trying to build there.
Two phases?
Yes. One is the hotel tower, and one is the residential tower. There's a drawing, do you have the drawings? Maybe I can show you.
I have the drawing, no.
Your packet, what is your packet?
One of the hotels would be the hotel. Let's go, let's go.
Okay. How many units?
Yeah. Mr. Trump, he showed.
150. Mr. President, I'm trying to ascertain how many residential units as opposed to hotel rooms? About 150 residential units.
What?
What the...
100?
You gonna speak to that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, again, the plans submitted, which again, I have to stress are, in my mind, still very preliminary, so the zone change allows the development to move forward because you, you, as Attorney Ryan had said, the height restriction is gone. Currently under Business B, you are limited to 60 feet in height. We recently rezoned Union Station parking garage because they had a similar issue looking to, to build a garage higher than the underlying zoning. But in this particular lease proposal, it does indicate that there would be...
135 units.
135 units of residence.
And 120 possible hotel rooms.
Right. So again, I think, you know, again, I think these numbers are probably preliminary, I think those all gonna be based on the market and, and conditions, but, I mean, it is a unique project, and hopefully it will move forward.
Thank you so very much. I don't equivocally, if we do 135 units of studio or one bedrooms, and 120 hotel rooms, I think it would add significantly to the housing stock in the downtown area, and also create a hotel in the downtown area, which is certainly gonna be needed. I noticed that they have a cul-de-sac.
No, that's just the, that's the, that's the, I think, attorney. I did want to, you know, just piggyback on Attorney Ryan's again, even though you're, you do, if you, obviously if you choose to approve the zone change for the construction of this particular project, under our zoning ordinance, it's gonna trigger a number of reviews. A hotel in itself is a, is a tiered review, so again, depending on the height and the size of the development, the level of review climbs. So this is a pretty significant development, if it would even to move forward in this fashion, would trigger a special permit through the city council. So, so it's still, there's still a number of protections for the city.
Another site plan review.
Even if the, it's not a site plan review, this, I mean, a special permit.
That's a site plan review.
Yeah, so, so that is, that is, that is a part of the zoning regulation. So in addition to the zone change, they would have to come back when they're ready to move forward with construction and petition the city council for a special permit.
Now, does this have to go zoning void, appeal?
No.
No?
Again, another, another one of the positives of Business C, it does, it does, although residents and hotel do require off-street parking, Business C in itself or a commercial use does not require off-street parking. But they are proposing, they are proposing...
They're providing it anyway.
Yeah, they are proposing a garage that would, that would accommodate the needs for this particular development.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. President, the records should show that I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to say that I think this is a very interesting use of a building that is vacant right now, and I think it's gonna have a very, very positive effect, and I definitely like the use of the word "tower."
like the use of the word "tower."
Oh, no.
But I am concerned because the last paragraph in our report from the planning board mentions their concern about the condition of the property and broken windows and graffiti and so forth. And if we do have a snowstorm, are you going to be responsible for that? And how are you addressing those concerns about the condition of the property?
Right now, we have cleaned up a lot of debris. I have cleaned up the graffitis and even whoever, you know, is doing it. We keep, we are keeping our property up to date right now so far, you know. And the broken window, I can't help it because we are going to knock the building down anyway, you know.
It already is there.
So when would anything, when this, when you do do the hotel, this will come, the existing building comes down?
Yes, totally.
And when will that happen, or is it a long way to go?
Once we get the zone changing, then I'm going to apply for demolition permit.
Oh, okay.
And once the EPA will be involved in that one because we have asbestos in the building.
Okay.
So what's, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, and good luck.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Counsel Shay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask, you know, is there financing in place already for the total project?
We are working on it right now, you know. We have a few investors, and I'm getting some investment from the foreign countries even, from Dubai. One of my partners is from Dubai, and he's very much interested in developing.
So I can't tell if that's a yes, you have financing, or you're in the process of getting financing.
Working on it. It's a good chance of getting a finance.
Good chance that you'll get financing.
Very good chance. Because of the MGM Casino, that's why.
All right.
The other question I have is, if we approve this, we've got a hotel complex and we've got a residential complex. Should the hotel not work out economically, would we then wind up with almost 300 and something housing units on this site? I mean, does that give us a problem on the zoning with that amount of housing in that area?
Certainly not.
Counsel, I honestly don't have an answer because I never contemplated that. Anything that we do in terms of, I believe, as Mr. Dromi said, needs a further tiered review under the zoning ordinance. So whether it's housing or a hotel, we'd have to come in at least to the planning board and more likely than not, to the council for a special permit. And at that time...
Basically, tonight, we're simply giving the zoning so that you have the potential to put a high-rise there. That's really what we're committing to.
Yeah. And anything else, we still have to go work with the city to get the necessary approvals.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Say again, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Say again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Any questions from the council for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the hearing in the hearing. Is there any discussion, or are we ready for a vote?
Ready.
Okay.
Motion to the zone change.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Rook, seconded by Counsel Twigs. Mr. Clerk, on the roll. Please call the roll.
On granting the zone change, Counsel Hirsch. Yes, Counsel Shay?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel B. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel M. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more than sufficient. Zone change is approved. Any more business? Congratulations. Any more business this evening, Mr. Clerk?
I have no further business left before the council.
Okay. Everybody, with respect to item number one tonight that was referred to Counsel Shay's committee, we're going to have to bring it back up at our next hearings meeting in March without sending it to Counsel Shay's committee, basically because of a procedural way that we handled the first hearing. So we're going to continue the hearing until the next meeting, and we'll take it up at that time.
You mean February?
I meant February. I meant February, okay? And we'll see everybody tomorrow night at 5:30.